Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order and for the August first, two thousand and twenty four city council meeting. Cindy, would you do roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Case.
Here.
Mayor Potam Nakai.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Gier.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
Would everyone join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? This evening, we have no ceremonies, presentations, or appointments. We do have one correction to the agenda, and that is item nine B. Under public hearings, that item has been withdrawn. And will not be coming back. So we will only have nine A in that section. We have nothing on the consent calendar. And that takes us to public comment on items not on the agenda. Cindy, do we have folks signed up?
Yes, we have two. Our first one is Debbie Miller.
Thank you. Debbie, your name and city of residence, please.
Thank you very much, Debbie Miller, and I think I actually live at the office more than I do at home. So I live in Colorado Springs. And Mayor, bear with me tonight, I have practiced and practiced and practiced this. And it goes over three minutes, but and I'll talk really fast. In light of the workshop that was held this evening and had the pleasure to sit through. I think this is very appropriate tonight. What's been laying on my heart and what I want to share with you. What was shared with you in the workshop was what the residents think. You're going to hear a little bit tonight about what people coming to our community think. So standing here before you this evening, I want to share what's become a typical work week for me at the Chamber and Visitor Center. A couple walks in looking to relocate here, a family's visiting and looking for things to do. A single person new to the area seeks ways to engage with the community. Locals who live here and work here call for help. These scenarios sound pretty straightforward, but let me tell you, they are not. We know the best way to help getting to get people engaged is personal conversations. Where are you? Where are you from? What are you looking for in a community? What are your hobbies? Have you been here before? This engagement helps us in helping for them to to get their dream location, their dream vacation, community involvement, and it excites me and our volunteers when we get to engage. More often than not now, there's hesitancy and even resistance when they walk in to engage in conversation. And I've been puzzled and I wondered why this trend's becoming more common. Words matter. A hesitant couple looking to relocate revealed their concerns after I reassured them. Don't believe everything, all the negativity that you hear on social media. We had a positive conversation about their fit in our community, and they left promising to return, and they did. A visiting family initially hesitant admitted that they had heard negative comments on social media, so they were fearful to tell me they were attending a conference here. I assured them of their welcome. I told them I would see them out there because I am honored to go to these conferences and welcome these people to our community. They gave me a hug and promised to return. A shy individual who had just moved here came in and said, I want to know how to get involved in the community. But I've been told I shouldn't do this or warned about that. I reassured them they would be embraced and accepted here. Relief washed over them. Yesterday, I actually had potential business owners visit concerned about negative comments they'd heard on a recent local podcast. They wanted to open a certain type of business that was discouraged by the podcast speaker and their guest. I showed them resources, support to help them make an informed decision and reminded them we live in a country with a free enterprise system. And one thing I know when businesses want to come here, they do their research. Words matter. Phone calls from employees fearing for their jobs due to negative comments by a person or someone of influence recently bashing a local employer. Have you worried, ever worried about needing your rent if your employer was to downsize or to close? It's not a fun position to be in. Words matter. I recently learned a lesson myself while speaking at a community meeting. Despite supporting the facts, my words were unclear. I needed to better explain and balance the negatives and the positives. Words matter. So in closing, I offer up a challenge to all of you on the dais, to the audience that's here tonight, to those listening online, and certainly to myself. You may not realize that you are an influencer, and that's the big hot word nowadays. But we all are because people are listening. So before we speak in public, on a podcast, in social media, think about words matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Next, we have.
Gail Gurey, please.
Gail, if you'd just share your name and city of residence when you get to the podium. Thank you.
Gail Gurey, Woodland Park. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for agreeing to option number one as a resolution to the sales tax issue for accounting for the school district at the last meeting. The option which was strongly supported by the city manager and Tony Perry, president and CEO of Park State Bank. But I do have concerns about the implementation of the option. School Board President Nick Bates mentioned three times at the last meeting that the school district signed off on an IGA with no changes and monthly reporting was not the nature of the required report. Then he said, he, no one in administration had seen copies of the information shared at your first meeting. And finally, he stated that the district won't look at this quote, new layer unquote, without CFO and a CFO in place. Mr. Perry suggested to Mr. Bates that the district require the new CFO to have the ability to do monthly line item accounting. No one has taken the initiative to list this job responsibility in essential functions of the CFO job posting. It is the responsibility of the employer to require this knowledge and ability prior to hiring someone. And as of yesterday, the CFO position remains unfilled. Merit Academy also needs to adopt option one since transparency is an issue and general fund tracking is not adequate. The recent budget mentions payoff of long term debt, still owing ER BOSI's seventy seven thousand dollars and having a line of credit for quote, short term operating cash needs unquote. That brings in question the refinancing of the Vector Bank three hundred and seventy nine thousand dollar loan through a line of credit in January. Was this paid off? And what funds were used to do that? Their budget doesn't clearly identify debt or any payoff. Was this sales tax money used for debt? The school district and merit have not earned the taxpayers' trust. If option one is not implemented by the first quarter of this school year, I would urge the council to let the voters decide if this tax should be continued. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Is that all?
I have no one else. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council that did not sign up? Okay, thank you. That takes us to item seven unfinished business, which we do not have anything. And on to eight ordinances on initial posting. Item A is consider ordinance number fourteen seventy nine, series two thousand and twenty four on initial posting and ordinance of the city. An ordinance for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado repealing and reenacting check chapter nine point four one of the city municipal code to regulate noise within the city. And our attorney Nina Williams will present.
Thank you, everyone. So there was a concern, someone concerned in the public about a month or so ago talking about our noise regulations or a very specific portion of it. And what we did is we looked at the current ordinance, which is your current chapter nine point four one. And we determined from our experience that it was better to repeal and replace. So that's why there is no red line in the packet. The next packet could have a copy of the current one, or you could see it on municipal code, muni code. So what I would say is, you know, over the next two weeks and 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 the next time we have a meeting, see, you know, see if you have any questions, any thing that you feel would be more specific to anything that was is better for Woodland Park, but we do recommend just the generally how we wrote it because it's more enforceable, there are specific decibel levels. It allows code enforcement to actually do something about it just from our best practices in writing these type of codes and enforcing these type of codes in other cities. So we would recommend, you know, repealing and replacing, but again, feel free to ask questions either now, in the next two weeks, or the next meeting as to if it could be tweaked in a way that we might have missed for your community. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Nina. Counsel, I just want to bring to your attention that that description of this item should have ended with and set the public hearing for August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four. So when the motion's made, that should be included, please. And this is on initial posting with the purpose of setting the public hearing.
So I only had one real quick thing, and it's a typo, but I left my note at home, I apologize. But there's a paragraph that's duplicated.
Okay.
So if you just, you can read through that.
Perfect, let's fix that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Kell. Counselors, can I have a motion, please?
I have a question. So are we repealing this before we have a new thing to put in place?
No, we're doing both. We have a new thing to.
Okay, okay, but it's not final.
It's the first reading.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then I'll make a motion to. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen seventy nine, series two thousand and twenty four. An initial posting of an ordinance for the city council of Woodland Park, Colorado repealing and reenacting chapter nine point four one of the city municipal code to regulate noise within the city. And set the public hearing for August fifteenth.
My second.
Excuse me, Mayor, I might be out of place, but we do have public comment.
Oh, oh, no, not on first reading.
If you.
We can't.
Oh, okay.
It may be.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Thank you. I appreciate you looking after me. I need it.
Here when I think I know I'm doing something right.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion, counsel? Cindy?
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gier?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wilson carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Item nine A, public hearings, is consider a request by Silas Beck, the applicant and SMGC Greg Brown, property owner, for a temporary use permit for a special event to operate after nine PM and to include onsite camping from August twenty third to August twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four for the Frisen Disc Golf Tournament at Shining Mountain Golf Course, one hundred Shining Mountain Lane in the Planned Unit Development Zone District. This is quasi judicial. And we have the planning director Karen Schmink, and I know she's at the podium. Thank you.
Good evening and ready to go, sharing screens. So our title slide announcing the item, and I will dive immediately into the details. So the Frisen Disc Golf Event has been held in Woodland Park since two thousand and nineteen. This property is part of the Shining Mountain Golf Course property, which is located north on Highway sixty seven. And I do want to note on the the screen here, you can see where we have identified the part of the Shining Mountain Golf Course where the event is held. So it's that little blue or purplish triangle or rectangle that hangs down into a white square there. So that's the site where the event actually takes place, and that white area around it is outside city limits and is actually Forest Service property. So most of it is surrounded by Forest Service. So in conjunction with this disc golf tournament, the event hosts live music on both Friday and Saturday nights. And per prior authorization by city council, the live music must be finished by eleven PM. And then this is the first year where they are requesting to be able to do camping in conjunction with this event. So as I just noted, or actually, most temporary use permits are reviewed and approved administratively. But it is events that operate between nine PM and seven AM that are subject to city council review and action. And so the first time council looked at this was back in ironically, August first of two thousand and nineteen. And at that time, that's when council granted that ability to operate until eleven PM at night on both Friday and Saturday night, and it was subject to nine conditions. And in your packet, you had a copy of last year's TUP, Temporary Use Permit. And it outlined all of those conditions, which have remained largely the same since this was initially authorized by y'all in two thousand and nineteen. And then, so what's happened in the years in between? By city code, so long as the temporary use circumstances are substantially unchanged from the original application and no complaints of issues have been received by the city, staff can do an administrative approval or reissue of that permit. So that's what's happened in the interim years. So the reason this is back in front of you tonight is twofold. One is we did receive noise complaints. There have been occasion in years past where we received complaints verbally, but nobody put them in writing, so we had no real documentation to bring to you around what the complaint is, where it is, those kind of things. And then, so it was this year, early in June, when we received two written complaints about noise after eleven PM from last year's event. And so those were a part of your packet also, and then this graphic shows you where the event site is relative to the two complaint locations. So even though there's a, it seems like a reasonable buffer of land area around the event site, the, these parcels still heard noise. And the way they explained it in their emails is it was, it was disruptive to their personal life and their ability to sleep because I think one of them actually referenced two AM when they were hearing noise. As part of our due diligence for preparing this for you, we did check with Woodland Park Police Department to see what kind of records they had from last year, and there was no record of them having received noise complaints in two thousand and thirteen or two thousand and twenty three. So the other item in front of you this evening is the request to add camping to the events associated with this, this golf tournament. So per municipal code eight point one two, city council may permit self contained camping units in designated locations other than licensed campground. There are restrictions, mostly in terms of time that that can happen, it's a maximum ninety six hours. And so these folks are asking for camping up for eighty five people. We were estimating fifty units that be, folks be allowed to camp onsite. In your packet, there was also a site plan that showed a rough layout of the event and where they would have camping versus parking. I think they even outlined their porta potties, so trying to paint a solid picture for you in terms of how those typical concerns are being addressed. So options for city council this evening, one is to just flat out deny the request. The second one, and there's technically like, I think five options here. So the second one is to approve the temporary use permit, but restrict the hours to no noise after nine PM, which is a typical temporary use permit. And perhaps authorize camping in conjunction with that or not. And then the third one is the temporary use permit as it has been, which allows extended noise hours up to eleven PM. And you may or may not choose to add camping to that particular one. So in your packet, there were two different sets of conditions. So this first set is the the standard conditions that we would associate with just the use permit at this location. These are the conditions that you saw in last year's permit. So we would recommend carrying those forward. If you wanted to change the time from eleven PM to nine PM, there are a couple places within those conditions where we would need to modify that time. But otherwise, this specifies music and lights are turned off by a specific time. The event coordinator must be responsive to complaints received. The event coordinator is supposed to distribute a telephone number and event brochure to surrounding residences and to the Woodland Park Police Department, Fire District, and the Planning Department. And that notifies those property owners of the event and provides a number for folks to call with any complaints they might have. This provision D goes back to the original issuance by council that spells out what happens if a complaint is received by the police department after nine PM. That then gets routed back to the event coordinator, so that at that point, they're supposed to turn off the application, amplification, or reduce the volume of the sound system. If there's a second complaint after the volume has been reduced, then they need to immediately cease all sound, including generators emanating from the event. Condition E is all lighting, needs to be downcast and fully shielded. F, all generators are turned off by eleven or whatever time is designated. The temporary parking field and area surrounding the stage shall be mowed to no more than four inches in height prior to parking any vehicles or assemblage on the stage platform. This was in relation to addressing concerns about dry conditions and fire. And then they have a standing fire mitigation plan with the city that was approved back in two thousand and nineteen that includes a fully loaded water truck onsite, multiple fire extinguishers distributed throughout the site, and then designated smoking areas. And then the last one is the event coordinator shall at all times be subject to the municipal code on noise, except where it's waived herein, which is that basically nine to eleven PM time period. So conditions that are recommended, if you wish to allow camping, you see these, you've seen these before for a different event, the last meeting. So camping shall occur beginning at nine AM on that August twenty third and be all cleared out by six PM on the twenty fifth. It's for event participants only, with no more than fifty camping units permitted onsite at any given time. The units can include tents, camper trailers, recreation vehicles, and pickup campers. These camping units shall not be connected to city water or sewer, and they shall be self contained. On and off site trash, garbage, or debris needs to be cleaned up during and upon cessation of camping. Onsite cleanup shall be coordinated and forced by the property owner and event coordinator. The event coordinator needs to be responsive to complaints. The lighting in the camping and event areas again needs to be downcast, fully shielded, and turned off by nine PM each night. All generators are turned off by nine. The event coordinator and all campers are subject to that noise ordinance again. And then consistent with the fire mitigation plan, no open flames are allowed, so no campfires. So those are the recommendations and the options available to council this evening. And then we do have the event applicant, Mr. Beck here in the audience with us.
Thank you, Karen. Mr. Beck, would you like to address the council, please? They may have, I'm sorry, counsel, I didn't ask you if you had questions for staff.
I do. I think Councilman Gier did as well. My first question was the fire mitigation plan that was approved in two thousand and nineteen, would that still be applicable if camping is included? Or would they need to update it?
I looked through it last week. I believe it's still largely applicable because that fire mitigation plan already says no open flames. So I was just spelling it out with the campaign that the no open flames is definitely of importance, and I felt was worth reiterating in the conditions of approval.
And the camping per temporary use permit that we approved for the Rockin' Gym Festival, was that the participants in the camping site that they use, when was their cutoff for noise and lights?
Nine PM. They did not have extended hours.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions as staff? All right, sorry about that, please. If you'd just introduce yourself and your city of residence for the council.
Awesome. Well, my name is Silas Beck, and my city is Woodland Park. So just thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am the new general manager out at Shining Mountain Golf Course. And to address the noise complaint that occurred last year, from all of the research that I have been able to gather, it was not from the band whatsoever. The bands were punctual to cutoff by eleven PM. It was actually from, from one of the residents that are the, they told me they actually had camping last year. So I'm not sure how that worked out, but that's how that happened, just got here. But they said that it was actually from someone who was camping out and they were playing aloud stereo system like a boombox. And as soon as it was reported to the former general manager, Amy Fuller, she got a hold of the tournament director, Raymond Carr, and it was taken care of within ten fifteen minutes. So going forward, the way we've planned on changing that where there's no outside interference would be, I explicitly made it clear to Mr. Raymond that there is to be no music within the campsites, no, no stereo systems, nothing like of that nature, that at eleven o'clock, they shut off, and that is their time to flights out and time to go to bed because they gotta turn it the next day. So that's the way we plan on mitigating that. I am very surprised that the houses on the map were able to hear it because across that, I mean, you've got probably half a mile to maybe three quarters of a mile of open field through, through wetland. And it comes from a wooded area, so the fact that they were able to hear that is pretty impressive to me because it's very surrounded by woods and the wetlands are right there as well, so. If y'all have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Counsel questions of the applicant?
Sure.
Mr. Smith?
Actually, I got two questions. Has there been any thoughts of having any type of security for this event, or they feel they wouldn't need it?
From all that I've been told, no, sir. There's no thoughts of security. It's on Shining Mountain Golf Course property, and we do have a gate to the access road that it gets closed after all of the tournament and participants arrive, and they're, they're they are required to show a, like a perm, not a permit, a ticket that lets them in, the gates monitored and managed by either Shining Mountain Golf Course staff or by the tournament director himself. And so no one gets in and gets out, it's not free flow traffic, so once the people are there, gates closed. So we've not thought of any security on that.
Okay. Excuse me. And then the second question is, will you be selling alcohol or what during this event?
So alcohol will only be sold through the bar in Shining Mountain Golf Course steward or liquor license. There's no outside alcohol allowed on the premises. You can't bring your own at all. So any alcohol that is purchased has to be bought through our bar, and our bar closes down at seven, so. That's how that goes.
Well, I can sneak sneak shop bottles into a concert, so.
We've dealt with that, so that is true.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Yes, Karen.
Who is the tournament director? Is that the individual that would be responsible for noise or any other type of complaint, or would it be Shining Mountain Golf Course?
Yeah, I believe his name, so his name is Raymond Carr, and he's been running it since the very beginning. And it would be a mixture of both of us, so he is going to be onsite camping with the participants. So any noise complaint, I'm assuming would get reported to the police department first, and then would either come to my cellphone or Raymond's, and so we would both probably be called. I don't really know who would get preference on that, but either myself or him.
Well, that that begs the question, I mean, we've got very specific conditions in this, this permit that the individual that's responsible for the event is the individual that would be contacted and be held liable for noise complaints, correct?
Then that would be me. That would be mine, if I, especially because my number would be on the brochure that would go out, so that would be my number.
Oh, man, okay, thanks.
Anything else, counsel of the applicant?
No, but I'd like to make a motion. Oh, public comment, pardon?
And I have a question for you. What would that look like for your plans and your arrangement if the council decided that ten PM would be a more appropriate time? Or nine? I mean, we've, we've extended recently some for to ten o'clock. And that's, it's happened many times before for different events over the years. So I just thought I would ask how, how that would impact your plan. So I just thought I would ask how how that would impact your plans and your event if the council decided on an earlier hour of either nine or ten.
From what I know, it would be probably canceling one of the bands that Raymond's already scheduled. Because I believe from what I've been told by him, he already has the scheduled lineup of the multiple bands that'll be playing. So it would probably look like either cutting one of them short or maybe even canceling. I did, am I allowed to ask a question to you guys?
You bet.
Okay, awesome. So it, how long? Was last year not, so last year was allowed to go to eleven. Was the year prior to that, was it also able to go to eleven? Or at what point did it get extended? At what year?
At the initial initial issuance of the permit in twenty nineteen, it was to eleven P M. And it has been that way in the interim years.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you for that. I don't hear anything else coming from the the board. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, counsel of staff? Before I will open the public comment period of this public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council? Do you have anyone signed up, Cindy?
I do not. Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wishing? Yes, sir. Your name and out and ton of residents, please.
Gary Penland, Woodland Park. I just want to make one quick statement. I live pretty close to the golf course. In fact, it's in my backyard. And I've never, this event has never bothered us at all. It's been open until eleven o'clock probably or maybe even noise later than that. Which shouldn't be, but it's never bothered us at all. And we live pretty close.
Yes, you do. Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else? All right, I'll close the public comment portion of this public hearing and look to the council for either further discussion or motion.
I really don't understand why we couldn't just go to eleven. I mean.
It's fine with me.
Yeah, this is, this is a known event. I think if you give proper notice, people will, you know, it's it's a cool thing that happens in our town. We're taking advantage of a of a golf course that, you know, doesn't get that kind of utilization. So. I'm I'm pretty good with it.
Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not real comfortable with the camping. I mean, we're in a burn band and we're gonna let tents camp up against the forest and you can be responsible, but it doesn't. One irresponsible person is going to start, can start a fire. And even if you've got the most responsible. Person running the event with our dry tinderbox right now, I'm just extremely uncomfortable with the camping concept.
As am I. And I'm honestly not that thrilled about the eleven P M. Cutoff, you know, the the complaints that we got. I'm very sensitive to our citizens' complaints about noise. You know, distance to me is kind of irrelevant. I live right by Meadowwood Sports Complex in the middle of the forest. But the way the acoustics work, I can hear people's conversations down to a word. So the distance doesn't really seem applicable to me. I would be more concerned on the limiting of the time to the impact to the event more than more than anything. But, you know, if council were to determine that nine P M. Was a more appropriate cutoff time, I would support that. But I'm definitely against the camping.
Yeah, I mean, the cutoff time's not as much of a thing for me, whether it's nine, ten, or eleven. But you guys have got to stop it at eleven if if you get it approved. I mean, not eleven oh one. But our downtown businesses aren't even open until eleven o'clock. You know, and I. And and they're far enough away from residences that it loud as they want to be, they're not going to bother anybody. And I don't know how long you've been here, but the the sound does travel quite a bit. It's pretty quiet and peaceful. Up here. So I'm glad Mister Penland hasn't been bothered by it, but there were citizens that were bothered by it. And I'm kind of with you, Catherine, Councilman McGuy, about the fire issue, so.
Mary, do you recall which events we have extended that nine P M. Time on their permits?
We did the Fourth of July this year for the Symphony Above the Clouds. We've done the Symphony Above the Clouds each year. Until when we were at the middle school, because we always went into tent and after ten o'clock. Just to clean up, get the lights down.
But music stopped at an early.
Nine forty-five, ten o'clock, yeah. Usually nine forty-five is when the fireworks would go off because the sky is black.
I I will have to say, I I I know some folks who live off of painted rock road that have that heard the noise last year. That's quite a distance, but again, it goes back to the odd acoustics in that area. And though they're not residents of Woodland Park proper, they did hear the event and and were not happy with the noise after eleven P M. It did go into early morning hours.
I'm an avid camper and. Yeah, for as dry as it is out here. We haven't really had substantial rain to bring up the moisture levels. I would, I unfortunately would have to disagree with having camping out there.
Anyone else?
Could I ask staff again to show us the area? Can you show the area in the from the package where the camping would occur? It was kind of a cartoonish map, but it served a purpose.
Their part of their application?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's gonna take me a minute. That's a different spot.
I I I just, and the reason I ask is just so people understand where that camping would be. Limited to, and I know that the the request included. Wheeled campers, how would they get in there? And, you know, is that a place that can support? Campers versus campers and R Vs versus teenage.
Yes. So this is, this may be where I need some assistance from Mister Beck in terms of how this particular aerial. Fits within that that rectangle I showed you and in terms of accessing it. But so, yeah, there are. Gonna run into problems here trying to read this. The the tents. Porta potties, there's a registration tent, awards and music games. The course, the golf course is over here towards the the left side of the screen. This, so that. See here, there's a cat, the cars actually stacked up for for camping, so.
And so the awards and music and games, that's where the live bands would perform. Okay, so that is up against the horse line. And then the camping is where those. Those petroglyph tents are, okay. Okay, got it. And then if in fact there were more than tents, how would the campers on wheels get in there? Is there a road?
At the bottom there?
Yeah, I see at the bottom.
I I actually have business out here. I have a home for sale out here beyond this this site. And this road, there's three legs right there. One goes left. One kind of curves up like this, and then the big one that goes on into the subdivision. That one in the middle is the access to that area.
To the camping area?
To the whole area.
Yeah, and so is that it's it's a grassy area then, which could support R Vs?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And it's open.
Okay, and then the porta potties are gotcha down there. All right. Okay, thank you. And we leave it up there so people can visualize this.
Anything else, counsel?
I I would have this comment, though. I I'm pleased that we we've found a way to utilize Shining Mountain. It's always, as a golfer, it's always bothered me that we can't have a year-round golf course, but. This is certainly a means to address that in a season where we can use it. But weighing that against. Some of the complaints that all of us have heard about the noise from the from last year's, not not all the way back to two thousand and nineteen, but definitely last year's event. We have to consider that as well.
Generally speaking, Mister Brad, can I ask you a question? I just thought of something here. So generally speaking, when. This is the first time they've asked for camping, right? In the past, and I know these disc golf folks, but in the past, were they camping out in the forest anyway? Were they just, you know, dispersed camping? Do you know?
That's what I was told. Apparently, there is national forest right there. So I was informed that they have been camping out there.
Right. It's Forest Service and they're allowed to do that. So, but in this case, I think what what you're doing is actually getting everybody together and having some oversight and control. Otherwise, they're just gonna disperse.
Yes.
And we do have a police department that can respond to complaints that are made. And a sheriff's department. So if there are problems, I would I would encourage folks to to make those complaints to the authorities so that it can be responded to.
But there have been problems.
And there have been problems.
So we're we're talking like there haven't been, there have been. So. I think at some level, there there's a logical discussion about how far do we let that go?
I understand. There has been. There's been nothing reported to the authorities is my point.
May I ask another question?
Sure.
Would it make it if I myself camped out there, being the event coordinator anyways, would that make it, would that? Nullify any of the concerns for complaint? Because I'd I'd be right there like to be able to. Silence the noise?
And counsel, you can add that condition.
I do love camping.
If you choose.
I I appreciate that offer, but you were not the applicant and I I don't want to put you on the blame line. The applicant is the guy who's guy or gal. What was his name?
Stephen Raymond.
Raymond, Raymond Carr. He's 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 on the blame line and and the condition is now that he he's the individual. That would respond to complaints made to the police department.
Actually, I apologize for interrupting, but on the application form, it is actually Mister Beck's name. And he was here obviously talking about who the the event coordinator. So it sounds like Raymond, I didn't catch the last name. Is potentially running the logistics of the event otherwise.
Yeah, that's probably my mistake on communication. He's the tournament director, so he's the one actually running the disc golf itself. But I would be over the event part of like noise and complaints, concerns, questions, all that.
Okay, thanks. Good to know.
Got a question. So if, say, if you were to go out there and you were to camp with them in designated areas. Then you would be one hundred percent be on top to make sure that there'd be no fires going on.
Yes, sir, for sure. And we we take that very seriously. We already had it mowed once. We have clear line of sight, our our trees, we try and keep the the branches to the proper height, clear out the undergrowth. We we definitely take it very seriously. We have our ashtrays designated smoking spots and. We've never had an incident before because we do take it very seriously. We have our fire extinguishers out there. And everyone that comes out, while they may be the disc golf crowd, which is notorious for being a bit more rowdy. They are all avid outdoorsmen and they do love, they're not anyone, no one's there to cause problems. We've never had a fight. We've never had any dispute or anything. Which is pretty, I think, a great sign for something of this nature. I mean, most times there's always some kind of drama happen, but we haven't had anything like that. So they're definitely not there to cause problems. They just want to throw some discs and have a good time. But yeah, we we do not take fire lightly around here.
How long have you been involved with this tournament?
This would be my first year.
So you're basing your your statements on what you've been told then about?
And then, yes, from the research I've been doing.
Yeah, is there, I'm curious, is there anybody else in the audience that lives in that neighborhood that has an opinion? No?
Any further questions for the applicant, counsel? Or staff? All right then. Thank you, sir. I'll be looking for a motion. From someone.
I move that we approve the T U P with the cutoff time at ten o'clock and no camping.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion, counsel?
Yeah, I'd like to offer an amendment to restore the camping and move the time to eleven.
Does the second agree to that? Help me with process. Would you lean me out?
Yeah, let's.
No, we take the amendment.
You can take the amendment before the.
Okay, we would have to vote on the amendment first.
We don't have a second.
I'll second that. All right. This is to accept the amendment to the original motion, Cindy.
Okay, thank you. Mackay?
No.
Baldwin?
No.
Gear?
No.
Barbie?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Case?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Back to the original motion. Any further conversation on the original motion, counsel?
I do think you're, you know, I think you have a managed camping situation. I like the additional condition. I I will tell you guys what you're gonna get without that is dispersed camping all around.
Yes, which is what they've been doing.
Yeah, and they're allowed to do that.
Yes.
But.
With no controls.
Yeah, with no control.
The county controls it.
No, it does. Actually, it's Forest Service, so.
Our state, yeah.
They are still subjected to the stage one fire ban though regardless.
That's correct.
Which I'd like to remind, campfires that are contained in a permanent firing located and developed in designated picnic and or campgrounds. On public and private lands for use, designated fire rings must be at least twenty-five feet away from all structures. Fire rings must be less than three feet in diameter or three feet in length and width. It must be at least eighteen inches in depth. A water supply or other approved fire extinguishing firefighter extinguisher must be readily available. All campfires must be attended by a person and just taking the opportunity to remind the community what the stage one fire ban. Means in this context.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, Karen.
I I would like then to amend the original motion to allow camping. But. Cut off at ten P M.
All right. Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right. Cindy, we're taking a vote on the amendment. To the original motion.
May I ask who I'm second to? Thank you. Baldwin?
No.
Gear?
No.
Barbie?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yeah.
Case?
Yes.
Mackay?
No.
Motion carries four three.
Can I just point out something? It's up to you all, but now if if you want to add on the conditions that are listed in the staff report. That would be recommended, but it's up to you all. Just want to make sure that doesn't get lost.
Okay, so then I'll make a motion to add the recommendations from the staff. Plus that Mister Beck will camp on site.
I'll second.
And just.
All nineteen conditions.
Conditions plus. Yes.
And the ten o'clock.
And the ten o'clock cutoff.
Anything else, counsel, to discussion on that? Cindy?
Gear?
No.
Barbie?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Mackay?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion carries six point.
Thank you, counsel. That was a great discussion. All right. Item B was removed. We're on to new business, item ten A. Consider approving a subdivision development agreement between Tava House Properties LLC. Consider approving a subdivision development agreement between Tava House Properties LLC. And the city of Woodland Park to authorize the installation of public improvements and other construction and improvements associated with the Woodland Station subdivision filing number two. And the presenter is Karen Schmick, our planning director. It is her show tonight.
That's why I gave the rest of the team the night off. All right, and um I brought my water bottle with me, so I'm, this is gonna take a little bit. Um, and I guess it's the compensation for a short staff report. You get a long staff presentation. Uh, the goal is to be thorough and to provide plenty of background information for everyone. Um, so that we all have a a good understanding of um the project, the facts, and where we are. So with that, this is a subdivision development agreement for Woodland Station filing number two and Tava House Development. So the property is located in the center of our downtown. You've got two pictures on this screen. The one on the left is an aerial. And the subject property is outlined in red. Uh, so that's a a large piece of property that had been owned by the city of Woodland Park. And it has since been transferred to Tava House Properties. The right side is the zoning map that shows um. The the Woodland Station overlay district, that's the red box. So that's an overlay zone that adds additional flexibility and development provisions. Um, and then that L-shaped property is really in the center of this, and the underlying zone is that central business district. Um, so you can see where US Highway twenty-four is just to the north of this, and there is a center street that comes down. And then uh hooks to the right is Saddle Club Avenue within the property. So in Woodland Park, uh, we have a typical development process, and there's essentially two options spelled out between our city code and the engineering specifications. And so this slide is a a condensed version of that very long flow chart that I think you all have seen on different occasions. And the points that are highlighted in green are ones that involve um either a staff approval or a public hearing approval through Planning Commission and City Council. Uh, and those are the the entitlements around being allowed to do the the land use or um or subdivide the property. So the one I'm gonna focus more on is is the one on the left where it goes through a sketch plan, which is the initial concept of how we want to split up the property. And then there's the preliminary plat, which outlines some of the the preliminary engineering and what this is gonna look like for that legal document that ultimately gets recorded that allows land transfers of smaller pieces to occur. Once that preliminary plat is approved, this is where the processes diverge, where somebody could go through and either on option two, get the final plat approval. Get that recorded with a development agreement and then immediately sell lots and then build all the infrastructure. Um, and then after that's all built and you've got uh passable roads and utilities to serve those lots. Then they can go and get a building permit to actually um build a structure, which then gets you to a house or other building, which can then be occupied and and used. Uh, under option one, it's after the preliminary plat where the construction drawings are approved, access permits. Uh, the infrastructure is constructed and then the final plat gets recorded and lots are sold. So. A lot of times there historically has not been a subdivision development agreement under option one. Uh, staff is really advocating for those as we go forward. Uh, for reasons that I'll I'll spell out a little bit more as we get further into this. But it's after that plat's recorded, lots are sold, that then building permits happen and ultimately occupying the structures that are developed on the land. So in this scenario, uh, we had Tava House Properties working with the Downtown Development Authority in terms of I got this plan of development. I want to take this um six acres here in the downtown. And we want to develop it in four phases. Uh, so in the center of this screen is the the overall plan of that L-shaped property. Uh, the blue square at the top is phase one. Uh, the red L on the left side is phase two. Phase three is a plaza in the center of those two parcels. And then the big piece, the big rectangle at the bottom was phase four. And um the first three phases were targeted as commercial. Phase four was uh. At this point, envisioned as residential with possible commercial, uh, somewhat to be determined by market conditions and what happens with phases one through three, since it there's a. A multi-year timeline associated with this development. It's a little hard to predict too far in the future. So this was the plan of development that was proposed. And so with this property, this history, it was back on August twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-two, when the developer, Tava House Properties. Sat down with um all of staff, um variety of department heads, um the fire district, and we looked at what they wanted to do. And we flagged issues or concerns or things that are gonna need to be addressed throughout the development process. And so that list is on the right side, and um you saw that list reappear at other phases in this project. So one of the next steps, you know, after that initial meeting, what do we think, what are we, what what we're thinking about? What do we need to be aware of as we start this whole thing? Uh, because this property was owned by the city and under the purview of the Downtown Development Authority. Per state law, they had to get a plan of development approved. And so that's that four phases I just went through in terms of why should they be allowed? To have this property transferred to them? What are they gonna do for it for the city? So that plan of development went through a review by Planning Commission, and then in front of City Council last April, where council approved that plan of development. And then it was um the week later when that uh property actually got transferred to the new owners. A couple months after that, June of last year is when staff uh gave them a formal sketch plan review and went into more detail. Um, supplementing the review that happened at the plan of development for the D D A and council. Uh, as well as things to be aware of as they dive further into the subdivision process. So all of these lists on the right showed up at all those different stages um in in the process. There might have been one or two that didn't show up initially um back of twenty-two, but the bulk of these have shown up. For well over a year now. And so after you get that guidance from the various department heads and uh. How to how to approach development, things to be aware of, the next stage in that development process was the preliminary plat. Um, and that was reviewed by City Council late last year and was in front of a a Planning Commission late last year. It was in front of City Council on February first, and so that's when City Council granted that particular approval. And so from there, that's where typically they would be looking at, I get my construction drawings approved, I start to build infrastructure. Or I go straight to final plat and look at a a subdivision development agreement. Um, so there's, that's where the two paths um traditionally show up. It was April thirtieth of this year where we had another meeting between the developer and staff and um council member Jones was there. Uh, as a represent, or as your liaison to the D D A, and then Mayor Case was also in attendance at that meeting. Where we sat down and the developer was saying to us, it's like, look, we have a really uh fast timeline. We gotta move this process along. What, how can we make that happen? Um, and I'm sorry, I got my slides out of order here briefly, so I'll I'll get back to that. Hold that thought. So with that approval at the preliminary plat, um, this slide, I want you to look at on the right side first. The dark outline is that L-shaped property that got transferred to Tava. And then within that, that red box is uh lot one, uh, which is where phase one, where the Tava House restaurant is proposed to go. Uh, so that particular property, that box shows up on the left side of the screen. Uh, so that's a more detailed site plan of what that corner of that property looks like with parking spaces, some small changes to Bergstrom Park to the north. Um, just how how that gets tucked into that particular corner of the six acre site. The other colors on the right side of the screen are important because the yellow stripe up at the top of the page is the very northern side of Bergstrom Park. Part of this development, there's improvements that are required by C dot in terms of accessing the site. So there's physical changes that need to happen up there that um put in a turn lane, which then moves the sidewalk to the south into Bergstrom Park. So there's actually. Approximately thirteen hundred square feet in that area that we lose out of the park. Um, that that are gonna be servicing this project. So that encroachment into part, the park needs to be addressed. Um, the green rectangle on the far left of the side, that property is actually owned by Beer Garden Lane Development. And in order to get a full width street and maximize this property, um, they have worked out an arrangement with that developer or that property owner. To use that fifteen-foot street to help stripe, to help put roadway, um, you know, actual street in there. But that property has not been conveyed to Tava yet, so there is a a separate property owner there. And then the blue box at the bottom there, that's actually um also related to needing to do street development to serve this property. That parcel is owned by the city of Woodland Park. And when you go back to the ordinance for when the city acquired that property. It clearly stated it was for the purposes of uh parking utilities, supporting development in the downtown, so supporting this parcel. Um, so that's gonna be a key item that I address when we talk about the S, the the subdivision development agreement. So back on February first, when council approves this, there was eight conditions of approval. Um, the applicant, uh, the developer has been working through those various conditions. Some of these have been resolved, some are still in play. Um, so condition one back then was that you need to do a subdivision development agreement regardless. So we're ticking that box right now. Um, the second one is the development of lot one, where the actual Tava House property or the Tava House Development is gonna go, the restaurant. Um, it's subject to all um development permits and permitting through Pike's Peak Regional to build um Building Department. Third is that the applicant needs to resolve the dedication right away, shown on the western edge of the property. Um, somehow get that addressed, because when this preliminary plat went in front of council, you know, it's owned by Beer Garden Lane Development. So the good news is the S D A starts to address some of that also. So we're we're getting that one handled. Uh, the fourth one is that that um loss of public parkland in Bergstrom Park. Um. You know, as well as street public and open space on the final plat, um, submitted to the city, those need to be addressed um at a subsequent point here. Um, number five has been taken care of. That was the relocation of the cog car, because back in February, that car was still there. It was. Not a hundred percent clear as to whether or not the car was staying, being relocated on that property or going somewhere else. Uh, six is when we do these reviews, uh, there are a bunch of comments that come back. So this one's saying, you gotta address all the comments we're giving you from looking at this. Uh, seven is that as part of the final plat, which is typically when we would see this, um, all the C dot comments. Um, need to be addressed in um including dealing with escrowing for their required improvements. And then the last one is this preliminary plat, as well as the future final plat, need to be revised to meet the standards in the code. Um, so there's still an outstanding preliminary plat document that needs to be finalized and signed off by staff. Um, you know, that the formal, what the preliminary plat document is. So back to where we are in our process. Like I said, we've gone through the plan of development, the sketch plan, the preliminary plat, and then we had that meeting on April thirtieth. Um, so from that, how can we accelerate this process? How can we keep this moving? We we wanna be. Open and operational in May of two thousand and twenty-five. That was the goal that they set out for staff. Um, so less than a year uh at this point. Back then it was slightly over. So the the mechanism that was determined was a subdivision development agreement. And with that, it includes construction drawings, um, it gets recorded. You've got the C dot access permits, they're dealing with C dot separately on, so that's clearly spelled out how that happens. Um, through this document, they're able to install all that infrastructure. And rather than sequentially get everything done and then go get your building permit, this document is saying, okay, you can do that simultaneously with all this other stuff. Um, so get your building permit, start construction on the building. Um, they're into, like I said, finalizing the preliminary plat documents. Going through the final plat or finalizing the preliminary plat documents, going through that final plat process, getting that um approved, the Planning Commission and City Council, and then ultimately recorded. Um, the infrastructure then gets complete, um, accepted by the city. The as-bills are submitted to the city, take care of cleaning all that up. And then they finish getting their certificate of occupancy with Pike's Peak Regional Building Department. So this this last section here below that red line are things that are all gonna. The desire is to work on them all at the same time, and that's what this document is going to allow them to do. So what is a subdivision development agreement? It is an agreement between the developer and the city. Um, which outlines actions that need to be taken related to the subdivision development of the parcel of land. It contains obligations of both parties, obligations and responsibilities actually, uh, lays out those standards and conditions that control the development. Um, and the completion uh for those required public improvements. Uh, public improvements is a very broad term, so that includes everything that makes a city tick, that allows us to get around. Um, so streets, curb, gutter, sidewalks, street signs, traffic control signage. Uh, in this case, some street landscaping, since it does include some street trees. Um, and then there's also just the infrastructure, which is the utilities, water, wastewater, storm sewer, electric, natural gas, communication utilities. All those are what go into um accomplishing a development and making it functional and utilizer for that end user. So the agreement you have in front of you, um, Nina was instrumental in helping us pull this together, and it was done collaboratively between um. Your team here at the city of Woodland Park as well as Tava's team. There was multiple backs and force with this document to make sure everybody was comfortable. So it spells out the location of the project, what's being built, who's paying for the improvements and infrastructure. Uh, what those construction plans and cost estimates are for all of this infrastructure. When does it need to be completed? Um, there's indemnification and insurance requirements spelled out. And then with the actual work that gets done, the construction of especially city infrastructure, it spells out. And it dovetails completely with our engineering specs, things we already have in place. Um, the inspections that the city does of the work throughout um the the whole construction process. Uh, the quality of the work that this needs to meet uh specific standards as spelled out in our engineering specs. And then it also defines any warranty or guarantee period for the improvements once they are done. And then um it also does include financial security that um the developer needs to provide either a letter, credit or bond typically, sometimes an escrow. Uh, for the funds that are required to actually construct all these improvements. That financial guarantee is important, that heaven forbid, um, the developer runs into unfortunate circumstances and needs to walk away from the project. Uh, but they have started work. Uh, that puts the money in place that the city should be able to access. And then utilized to finish all of that work. So that's where that's an important piece of all this. With this particular subdivision development agreement, we have uh spelled out those additional key provisions that allow the concurrent happening of. Um, the developer completing the entitlement process, you know, finalizing that preliminary plat and um. The the site plan documents and then uh completing that final plat process and getting that document recorded. Uh, their ability to, I said, all at the same time, construct the infrastructure, public improvements. Construct on the property owned by Beer Garden Lane Development as well as that owned by the city of Park, Woodland Park. Uh, able to construct their building on lot one. Um, prior to having that final plat um recorded and or approved and recorded. Because of the um ambitious time schedule here for wanting to get all this done. Um, it allows for extended hours for actually performing that construction. Um, so typically, I think we're at like seven to nine in our ordinance. So this it extends it by an hour on each side, six A M. to ten P M. Through May thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five. Um, that gets them essentially to eight-hour shifts for getting work done. Uh, if they choose to utilize that. Um, it spells out very clearly that Tava deals directly with C dot regarding the timing. Uh, their improvements required by C dot and the escrow C dot may require associated with those improvements. Um, that's all handled distinctly by them with C dot. Um, and then uh also just that whole process to determine compensation for that encroachment into Bergstrom Park. Um, that's already spelled out in our charter under section fifteen point two dash B, so that process still needs to happen and would need to be completed here. So attached to this agreement with all those provisions, there are four exhibits that are important. Um, the first one is the legal description for the affected parcels, and that's um the. And that's the, the big L shaped six acre piece that's owned by Tava. And then it also delineates part what we call parcel B, which is the fifteen foot strip owned by Beer Garden Lane Development. Exhibit B are quantities and cost estimates for construction of all those improvements. That one is still in reviews, needing some work. Exhibit C is the construction drawings, which spells out specifically where and how all these improvements got reviewed. Or I get installed. That one is still ongoing review and finalization. Both exhibits B and C, we have handed back to Tava at this point. So the ball's in their court to, to further refine those. But we're, we're on the home stretch with those. Forgot to mention exhibit A is complete. And then exhibit D is. A letter and then a legal description for the Beer Garden Lane parcel. And it's that property owner very clearly saying he consents to Tava House Properties installing infrastructure. In association with this phase one on his property prior to, you know, the entitlement process being finished. So he recognizes they're on his land doing all this. It's through the final plat, once that's approved. There's a conveyance that happens on that fifteen foot property from Beer Garden to Tava. And then the plat gets recorded where it clearly spells out how all that comes together. So we got a plan for that. Burning questions on the developer's mind because we've had a couple of meetings where they've been very clear about, so when can construction start? There is a, well, no, it's a fair question. So there's a separate grading permit out there that we have put together. This agreement acknowledges that grading permit. And there is a separate financial guarantee associated with that over lock rating. So as soon as we get a copy of that letter of credit. And I don't think there's anything else associated with that, other than maybe a pre-construction meeting. They should be able to really start working on that. Just today or yesterday, it's a blur, we gave the bank. A clear blessing on the, the, the letter of credit form. I just don't think I've seen it come back through my door as a fully executed letter. So we're that close on that one. And then the other part is this subdivision development agreement, it goes into effect on recordation. Of the agreement with Teller County Clerk and Recorder. I think that's on one of the last pages of the document where it says that explicitly in terms of what is the effective date. So before that can get recorded, we need to finalize those exhibits B, C and D. And then have received that financial guarantee. So that's, that's where we are on getting that taken care of. So once those exhibits are done, we've got whatever letter of credit or bond associated with that document gets recorded. They're good to go on all that other stuff. They are still subject to a separate permit with Pike's Peak Regional for the building itself. So the next big question is, when can I get the CO? You know, I've done all this work. When am I moving in? So here it's the entitlements are complete. So that's that preliminary plat document. And then the final plat is approved and recorded. That Bergstrom Park compensation is taken care of. The public improvements are completed. So what that means is we have received, we as a city have received and approved the as-built documents for where everything has been installed. And then the actual work is received initial acceptance. You know, that infrastructure and public improvement is initial acceptance. That's actually spelled out in. The Woodland Park engineering specs. It's very standard because that ensures that you can, you can get to the property. You can turn on the water, you, you know, some, some basics. That's all there and ready to go. The C dot permits need to have been resolved. So the construction's complete. They're done with all of that work. And then the building permit itself with Pike's Peak Regional, everything that they have done around that. Their final inspections, those are all taken care of. Since it's actually the, the building department that issues that certificate of occupancy. We as a city have just agreed to that, that they've taken care of other things on our end. So that's how that process happens there. So it's important to note that all of these things listed on this page are all the developer's responsibility. And this subdivision development agreement clearly lays all that out. Takes care of what is traditionally a very sequential process. That there's a lot of things that can now happen simultaneously if this agreement is approved. So it really fully empowers this developer to bring this project to life. So with that, the recommendation that you saw in your packet. Is to approve the subdivision development agreement between Tava House Properties LLC and the city of Woodland Park. Which would authorize the installation of public improvements and other construction improvements. Associated with the Woodland Station Subdivision filing number two. Subject to staff approval of exhibits B, C and D to the agreement. So I know that was long, but thank you.
Thank you. Council questions of staff before we hear from the applicant.
So I have a couple of questions. Is the grading permit tied to the approval of the SDA?
It is acknowledged in the SDA.
Okay, but if the, if the SDA agreement weren't approved tonight, they could still do the grading is where I'm trying to go.
Correct. It's the way it's currently set up. Staff was out on a limb on behalf of council. Because you're really supposed to have your property platted before we do that. So.
Okay.
In the name of supporting this development.
Okay, and then the reason we don't seem to want to wait on the SDA until after we have B, C and D done is because you want to do this sequentially?
No, those are. Those are on the.
Currently, sorry concurrently.
Yeah, the exhibits are supporting and a part of the SDA. They're just not finalized to be in front of you this evening. So that's something that at staff level, we're comfortable picking that up and making sure all that's taken care of for you. If you would like, you can certainly say we want to see those before we execute this document.
Okay, thank you.
C and D are, oh, sorry, is it B and C are typical in any SDA? Because you, you, you want to make sure you have the cost estimate for constructions and the approved drawings for the public improvements.
And exhibit D, I have everything for that. I just, it not in time for the packet. So I've got all the pieces to, you know, get that done. So that's where we are.
Karen?
Well, in the draft SDA before us, there are empty spaces for that grading. Or the drainage improvements. Would that be, when would that be filled in if we were to approve the SDA tonight?
Prior to recording for sure.
Well, good. And can you explain, I don't understand the Bergstrom Park compensation issue. What, what are we expecting to get from the developer on that?
Nina's looking like she's going to answer, so go for it.
Yeah, you could jump in. We put that language in because it is taking part of the current. Park. So your charter says you need to have a hearing regarding what, what happens and that that compensation language is from the charter.
And what kind of compensation would we be expecting?
It, the charter speaks to a hearing being held. And I would say in, in other municipalities, they either look at. Appraisal or a similar value of parkland in other similar communities. Because you'll be taking a, it'll be taking a sliver of parkland.
And which sliver is that?
It's, it's on the very north side of Bergstrom Park. So the sidewalk that you see right now, that's a straight line, you know, when you're out there walking around. That is going to end up jutting to the south into the grassy area of the park. So it will. What's, what's now park is going to be public sidewalk.
So if, if we approve the SDA tonight. How do we retroactively address that compensation if that has to go through a process?
I believe it's section three C.
Of this, oh, I'm trying to find the charter provisions. I could fully answer.
The SDA, I think it's three C. Charter, it's fifteen point two B.
Karen, am I correct that that, that's piece that you just spoke of? Is to provide for the space to do the turn lane. Or the egress off of twenty four to go on to Park Street into the project.
On to Center Street into the.
Onto Cent, I'm sorry, Center Street into the project.
Yeah, so right now you've got two lanes of traffic eastbound. They need to construct a turn lane in addition to that. So there is land in there that's still owned by C dot. To get that lane in there, but the sidewalk for the pedestrians is what then further encroaches into the parkland. So right now it's open part of the park. So what amounts to actual parkland gets reduced.
So yeah, I was more clear, speak to that. So I, I found the charter provision. I wanted to be more clear. So in section fifteen point two B of the Woodland Park Charter, it says undeveloped parkland dedications. Can be disposed of with a here, a notice of hearing. And that differs all from the statute in the state statute. If you'd never, were in a home role, it would be done by election if it was dedicated for park. So that's the, the applicant has agreed to that process. It could happen, we could have it on an upcoming agenda. And they, they've agreed that that's going to be, so it was just to move the process along.
Again, I just want to make sure if we approve the SDA tonight. And that's not accomplished. How do we hold their feet to it?
There's no certificate of occupancy. That was that list at the end of all these things that need to be accomplished.
So then to get the COP, then all the conditions then have to be met.
Yes, there's.
In the process.
And that's why we included everything.
That's why we include everything in this agreement. So it's recorded, the parties are agreeing, it's, it's all there.
Karen, can I ask you a question, please? And you may have just answered this, but why are we considering doing this out of order? And not doing the usual sequential process? Is it in the interest of speeding this up?
The developer's request, looking for other options because. You know, this, this project has started with the DDA. And, and this is seen as a very important parcel in the center of our downtown. Development of this can be, has the potential to be a great addition to our community. And so the developer has asked us to consider another way to get this done much more expediently. And this was the best that we could come up with in terms of allowing. What they need to happen to, to allow it to happen. But still very clearly spell out responsibilities, obligations, and, and who's doing what. You know, so that hopefully it's, it's clear. And I always encourage developers to welcome subdivision development agreements. Because, because it lays that out. So the city doesn't come on later and say, oh, well, we stumbled into this agree, this thing you need to do too. Or the developer's going, oh, no, I'm not going to do that. It's like, no, it's all out there together. This is what we're agreeing is going to get accomplished when and how.
So we're making exceptions to our normal process in order to speed this along.
Correct.
Okay. And. And, and so it was a year, a year ago, more than a year ago, right, that the DDA.
The property transfer.
Right. So these conversations have been going on for over a year?
It's been quite a while. My team has heard me say on more than one occasion, development is time consuming and capital intensive. And I've seen people consistently underestimate both of those requirements. So there, there's lots and lots of details involved in doing projects. Because you know, when we start at the plan of development or sketch plan, it's much more conceptual. The preliminary plat dives into much more detail in terms of what does this look like? What is the infrastructure? We're currently working on finally, so what are the construction drawings? What are those plans that are approved for construction? So there's just multiple layers and it takes quite a bit of time to, to get everything to coordinate correctly.
So tell me if I'm mischaracterizing this or misperceiving it. This work has been going on for a year now. It's, it's not that we, that nothing's been happening and now all of a sudden we're going to make all these accommodations in order to get something done.
Correct.
Okay.
There's, there's been back and forth on multiple occasions. I can, we've started putting together a timeline. I can finalize that for you if you really want to know every volley. I don't recommend it, but yeah, no, it's, it's a, a long intense process because there are so many details.
Anything else, counsel? For the staff before we hear from the applicant? All right. I will look to the, the development group to see whom would like to come up or all of you to address the council.
So I would just add counsel, well, Mark's coming up. This process has been going on actually for twenty one years, twenty one, some odd years. For this land. So it's been a longer conversation than just one year. No, the development of the land has been going on for more than twenty one years. Trying to develop. Yes. Good evening. Put your name and town of residence, please.
Mark Weaver, three one two, April Sun Court, Woodland Park, Colorado.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for considering this, counsel. We, we've had a slog to get here. It's been a joint effort with the city and our group. And we are excited to get to this point because this does, it's another hurdle. That we've been anticipating to do the project, come out of the ground, what we're trying to do.
Thank you. Counsel questions?
Questions, I'm happy to answer.
Steve?
I'm just kind of, kind of here. The only thing I'm hearing about is question regards to the sidewalk. That's going to be moved. So will people be now crossing towards more to the back? Or to the side of the Rhapsody? Because if you move it over, then it's not, so here's the other sidewalk and now it's over here. So for me, I have a issue with the possibility of safety. Of people just coming in, you know, without even paying attention.
It's a great question. So you know that intersection's a little wonky. And the, the sidewalk from Rhapsody over to Bergstrom is tucks back in already. And to accommodate that decel lane that, that C dot wants us to do. It, it is going to, it is going to shift it from right up against the road. Back over toward the, the back of the parking for Bergstrom Park. So it's not going to intrude into the parking lots. It's just going to get shifted over. So I guess this is a good question. The, the sidewalk is you're going to be going westbound across Center Street and your sidewalk's going to be straight across. And there's going to be a decel lane right there. So instead of doing this, you're just going to do this. Does that make sense? Is that Karen, is that reasonable or Ben, is that reasonable that, that angle?
Yeah, so just a second. Let me share my screen. I can show, because visuals always are better.
Me too.
Okay, so just to orient everybody, this is looking eastbound on highway twenty four and this is Center Street right here. So the new deceleration lane is going to start here, so you can see my cursor and come down across. Like this, so it's going to remove a portion of this hardscaped buffer right here between the existing sidewalk. And this whole sidewalk is going to have to shift all the way to the edge of the parking right here. To make enough room to have a compliant sidewalk that's six feet wide right there next to the turn line.
Also, counsel, another, another point that to be aware of is when you make that turn. The entrance into Bergstrom Park parking lot is immediately as you turn on to Center Street. The plan or the suggestion by the developer and, and staff is that that be closed and it be taken around on this. that that be closed and it be taken around on the south side of the parking lot to access that parking lot. So that backup onto twenty-four from people turning there should be alleviated a bit anyway, to make the traffic flow better as well.
Mayor, I would just like to add that that was part of the plans that counsel approved on February first, so that is the direction, you all said, yes, we wanna see go.
Right. Thank you, Karen. Counsel, questions for the applicant? No, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, looking for discussion, further, further questions for staff, any, whatever you'd like to consider this SDA? Oh. Um, I'd like to hear from the counsel still at this point.
I already did my question.
Thank you. All right.
Um, uh, so just the only part that, that bugs me is this reminds me a little bit of the guy that started his construction without permits, um, that bugs me that we're, once again, and I understand it's an important project for the city, I do get that. Um, that, that's the part that bothers me is that we're not following our own rules.
Well, I would suggest that we are following rules because all of the process is being taken care of, everything on the list is being addressed. It's being doing, it's being done consec- concurrently instead of sequentially. And the staff is comfortable with being able to comply with all of that and get everything done in order to facilitate um, this project coming out of the ground, it's been delayed and delayed and delayed because of bureaucracy, to be perfectly honest. And, and so, we as a team tried to put together, and I'm saying we, between the city and the development group, a plan and a way to make it work. We've had, as I said, twenty-one years of trying to develop this property and it's um, not happened for various reasons. And this is something that feels and looks and they are working really hard to make this project work. And I think that the city should be a partner in that. Yes, please.
I, I'd like to add just two points of clarification. Um, uh, one is uh, subdivision development agreements are a very common development tool. They are used throughout the state, so this is not novel or innovative by any stretch of the imagination, so hopefully that brings you all a little comfort.
And it, it is recorded and becomes a record on the deed, it is a cloud on title.
Yep.
Um, as recorded and becomes a part of the deed to the property. And so it's, it's binding, it's something that addresses all of the things that Karen outlined to get through the process to CO.
And so the other point was that um, to the mayor's, you know, um, um, comments that it, it allows things to be done in that non, uh, nonlinear way, but all of the responsibilities, all of the, the requirements of uh, sequential development are all still there. It just allows them to be done at the same time. So, another way to think about this is this fully empowers the developer to accomplish everything they want to within the timeline they have set for themselves.
And if they don't?
The agreement's longer than their timeline, um, I believe it talks about two years. Um, and they, they wanna be operational on, under a year at this point. So, um, if for some reason it takes longer than whatever that.
Do you mean the development agreement or the SDA?
Subdivision, SDA, sorry, um, yeah, uh, cuz there's a separate development agreement that was done with um, the DDA and the city.
Which has clear uh, deadlines and basis.
So this, the subdivision development agreement, uh, if for some reason we were to run long beyond what this agreement is, um, there is the ability to grant extensions. Meanwhile, the letter of credit and the financial guarantee needs to stay current so long as this develop, this agreement is active.
And this is not the first subdivision development agreement we've had, there's been, I understand, many, many.
I wasn't questioning the agreement, I was questioning the timing.
In, in, for clarification, I don't think any activity has gone on at that site that was not permitted to this point, correct? I, I mean, the, the, their builder coming in, you know, the, the type of work that's been going on, that, that's all been permitted and it did not require the SDA or a final plat, okay? Anything else, counsel, that you have for staff or anyone else? Further discussion among yourselves? All right, then I would be looking for a motion. Oh. Is there anyone in the audience that is dying to talk to the counsel about this SDA?
Mayor, we do have two people signed up to speak.
Thank you, Cindy. All right.
The first one is Tony Perry.
All right. Welcome, Tony. Your name and city of residence, please.
Tony Perry, City of Woodland Park, and I suspect I'll be coming here quite often, so I promised our mayor that I would write down my comments to try to be as succinct as possible. Cuz I can answer all kinds of questions for hours if you would like on this issue. So, uh, my name's Tony Perry, I'm speaking as the treasurer of the DDA. Our chair, Mr. Gamilke, uh, gave me uh, permission to come up and speak on this topic. Uh, next Tuesday, uh, we have our DDA meeting here in City Council at seven thirty AM. Right after that, we're going to have a workshop and it's regarding the reimagining of Berksstrom Park, okay, so we're gonna invite anyone, everyone from the community um, that's interested to come and be part of the brain trust, if you will, to see if we can come up with something better for the community. Uh, as you may know, Bert Berkstrom gave the property to the city now known as Berksstrom Park. He gave the property to the city. Uh, he also gave the property we are discussing today, that used to be called the Saddle Club, he gave that property to the Saddle Club in nineteen fifty. Uh, my favorite local historian, Steve Plute, who pretty much considered Mr. Berkstrom his second father and spent most of his formative teenage years hanging out with Mr. Berkstrom, um, will be in attendance. Uh, he has stated that Mr. Berkstrom would approve anything that would progress and improve the City of Woodland Park. He is anticipating some memorial honoring Mr. Berkstrom, so that's something that some of us have been working on behind the scenes, uh, as you may know, Mr. Plute did the Dickinson Memorial. He did the home, uh, the ladies home uh, club memorial over here in the park. Um, and again, he's an amazing historian and a great resource for us. So there seems to be a consensus of the DDA board members uh, for adding support to and improving and reimagining Berksstrom Park. Um, and what that really translates to is we believe we do have some monies that we can dedicate to the improvement and benefit of the downtown business area. And obviously, getting this area uh, revitalized with all of its warts from the last twenty-three years or plus um, is very desirable. Uh, I will say that as CEO of Park State Bank of Trusts, uh, concurrent processes in development are very common, and it's what happens in the real world, in my opinion. Um, and uh, the applicant, uh, you know, part of our process of selecting this group as the applicant, uh, we looked at uh, their background, their performance, um, I will say that they did bring on an eight million dollar project at Dublin Empowers in Colorado Springs uh, in less than a year. And so that I, I believe they've chosen the same development or the same um, general contractor to do this project. So I think they fully intend to meet that target and there's very legitimate business reasons for hitting that target, so um, appreciate your supporting your initiative, thank you.
Good job, two seconds, two tenths of a sec, two seconds left, good job.
And I misspoke, we only had one person on, on the.
Thank you, anyone else in the audience wishing to address the counsel? All right, thank you, counsel. Are you looking for a motion or further discussion?
I, I'll, I'll move to approve the subdivision development agreement between Tava House Properties LLC and the City of Woodland Park, which will authorize the installation of public improvements and other construction improvements associated with Woodland Station subdivision. Filing number two, subject, subject to the staff approval of exhibits, I'm going to include A. Exhibits A, B, C, and D to the agreement.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion, counsel? All right, Cindy?
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Mackay?
No.
Baldwin?
No.
In gear?
No.
Motion carries three, four, three.
All right, thank you, counsel, good discussion. All right, that takes us to reports. And mayor's report, I have community events for August first through August fifteenth, which is our next council meeting. Saturday, August third, from eleven to five in Memorial Park is Vino and Notes. Tuesday, August sixth, at Memorial Park, Woodland Park Police Department will be hosting National Night Out, an annual event that promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie, the event is free and goes from five to eight PM. Wednesday, August seventh, at Ute Pass Cultural Center Green Space, the Rampart Range Library will be hosting the end of summer foam party from ten AM to eleven thirty AM. Join the library and the cultural center for a morning of huge bubbles, music, and fun. Saturday, August tenth, through Sunday, August eleventh, from nine AM to four PM in Memorial Park is this year's thirty-ninth Annual Mountain Arts Festival. There will be a, be local and national art talent, live music, face painting, and great local eats. Sunday, August eleventh, from twelve noon to four PM at the Ute Pass Cultural Center Pavilion is the Hearts of Hope Fundraising Music Fest. And on Wednesday, August fourteenth, first is Meadowwood Sports Complex from ten to twelve, ten AM to twelve PM is this year's Touch a Truck event, kids can climb and crawl on a variety of big trucks and emergency vehicles. This is sponsored by the Resource Exchange and the City of Woodland Park. And second, the Ute Pass Cultural Central, Center Pavilion from six to eight PM, the Community Concert with Carrie Dell. And that's all I have this evening, Catherine? Um, the UAC is not meeting this month, so I don't have anything.
Thank you.
Perry?
Yes, I attended the um, CASA meeting, uh, and if you're not familiar with CASA, it's the Court Appointed Special Advocates uh, group in Colorado, and they need volunteers. I ha- I got a bunch of cards in case anybody's interested, so there are two different routes you can take after you go through the training. One is that you would um, be a s- person that supervises supervised visits with the parent and the child. Uh, the other option is that you would actually advocate for the child with the courts. Um, so you meet with school counselors, you meet with parents, you, you can take the kids out for on, on outings and, and you basically give a report to the judge about how the kid's doing. So, cards, happy, they'd love to have more volunteers in Teller County. The o- other thing is, I had several citizens call and ask about the um, Black Hills uh, releasing the gases last week, I'm not sure if any of you actually live in the neighborhood that I live in and that Jeff lives in. But um, I have been assured that the chiefs, Dyssler and Lambert now are on the contact list for Black Hills and I think for the other utilities too. In case something like that needs to be done again, will, that we will get more notice, the city didn't get any notice until um, Black Hills asked for um, traffic control, so. That's that, um, the other thing is, what, do we have an update on the, the IGA negotiations with the school board?
We are expecting to meet on August seventh.
Okay, and who's we?
Um, it's going to be in attendance myself, uh, Mayor Case, Councilmember Harvey, uh, School Board President McBates, the Vice President Cassie Kimbrel.
Mm-hmm.
And then we expect Superintendent and possibly the attorney to be there as well as our attorney, Jeff Wilson.
Okay, and, and who, how, mayor, may I ask what your rationale was for uh, how you picked who you were taking with you to that meeting?
Um, I thought that Carol would be useful because Carol was involved with the election for the tax. She was involved with bringing this issue forward and has a great deal of knowledge that I think would be hugely beneficial in the negotiation.
And I, I would, I would add that um, only two council members can uh, meet with this group without a, a public announcement. If we reach an impasse, then I would ask that we do a special meeting and that all council members would attend.
And we, we're all pretty much aware that that would violate the Sunshine Act if, if more than one council member or more than two council members attended. And there were several of us that expressed a desire to be a part of that. And I'm pretty sure you, Carol and um, sorry, council member, Harvey and um, and Mayor Case were part of the last time the IGA was negotiated, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all I want to know.
I was not. That was Mayor Labar.
Oh, but you were on council.
I was on council, yes, but that was Mayor Labar. All right, Jeff?
All right, so I have a few things to go through this evening, so I'll try to be succinct. Um, first, I wanna give a shout out to Suzanne, she's uh, listening or watching, our city clerk, um, hope she's uh, recovering well and, and I certainly look forward to your return. Uh, this morning, I attended the quarterly um, LEPC meeting um, at the Divide Fire District uh, Divide Fire Protection District Station. Um, just wanted to give an update that, that the things that, that we're currently working on, um, um, emergency operations plan rewrite, uh, fire suppression pond identification, uh, reviewing current fire ban stages and ordinances, uh, ground ambulance authorization to operate in Teller County, uh, community emergency response team CERT, um, uh, part of this is just an update that they now are under the sheriff's office. And they're also working on upgrading uh, radio infrastructure, uh, looking at getting into a mobile repeater for dead zones with radio coverage, and then they're also working on a major radio reprogramming effort. One of the things that I, I thought was interesting is, um, there's still not good consistency across every agency on how to radio communicate, um, especially um, in times of wildfire, uh, communication facilities getting knocked out and things of that nature, so um, it's just something that, that they're certainly working on and trying to get better at. I was encouraged overall by the amount of uh, attendance, all the different agencies. Uh, we also had several HOA presidents that showed up, um, it, it was quite a bit of people and we had a really good discussion about kinda where we're at with things and where we need to improve, um, so I was really pleased with that. Uh, Parks and Rec update, um, wanted to uh, give a congratulations to the Woodland Aquatic Center Wahoos. Uh, we are thrilled to announce that our talented athletes brought home an impressive collection of medals from the Pike's Peak Summer League Championship Swim Meet held at Rampart Range High School on July twenty-seventh and twenty-eight. Five gold, three silver, and two bronze. Um, the Parks and Recreation Month Scavenger Hunt was a huge success with thirteen scavengers participating in over a hundred outdoor activities for a total of a hundred and twenty-six prize entries. Uh, youth soccer league starts Monday, August fifth. Uh, Friday, August sixteenth, from six to nine PM, the Woodland Aquatic Center will be hosting their third annual Back to School Bash. Now, moving on from there, um, Joe Marin, if you're listening, I just wanted to acknowledge uh, the concerns that you've uh, brought forth to council uh, regarding code enhancement. Um, I just want you to know that I, I share the same frustration with the delay um, in our code enforcement. And I, I do believe that, that we can do better as a city here, and Aaron, I, I would like to see some improvement um, in how long that process has been allowed to drag out. Um, the last thing I wanted to talk about is just more of a general council discussion. Um, uh, we've had several people talk to us about a potential charter change to increase the residency requirement from one year to five years. Um, I am aware, and thank you Nina for providing that information, that there's an existing court case from, I think, nineteen seventy-three, it was uh, Something versus City of Aspen. And what was ruled at the time um, was that extending that time period past one year was a violation of the Equal Protection Clause of the US Constitution. Um, it's not that I don't hear that, but I still really think that we as a council, I think it's worthwhile at some point to have a discussion about whether or not we wanna look at passing um, or putting a charter change in front of the voters anyways. Um, I know that several people feel very strongly that our one-year residency requirement is not sufficient, so um, Nina, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to that or?
As I said, or I'm gonna say during my attorney report, as I told you.
Cool. Um, so just wanted to bring that up. Cool. Um so just wanted to bring that up. Um otherwise, uh that's what I have.
So just to share with you, and I'm sure you probably know, um the last council, we did bring this up and did have a long conversation about it because we wanted to refer it to the voters as well.
Yep.
And there's a lot of case law and a lot of law that that precludes us from doing that at the state level. And even though we are a home rule city, and I know Dean, she'll cover that, but election law, we are bound by the state.
Sure.
So um anyway, just to share.
You know, the 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 ruling now is what, almost fifty years old? So fifty-one years old now? So perhaps it's time to take it out for a test drive and see what it does.
Carol?
You like that?
Nothing quite as sexy. Um the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee meeting will be on the eighth of August at five PM in these in these chambers. And we have quite a few openings on the the committee. And it is not a necessity to be an a resident of Woodland Park. You can live in the general area if you would like to join that committee. And I failed to acknowledge the support uh that we received from one of the sponsors during the cleanup last month. And that was Walmart. Walmart really did uh provide quite a bit of logistics support for that event. And uh shout out to Walmart and all of the other sponsors. That was great participation. Um and that's all I have.
Thank you, George.
Yeah, Mr. Perry uh kind of announced it, but we do have the uh DDA meeting this Tuesday. Tuesday morning, seven thirty, it'll be right here. And as he talked about, it should be pretty fun. And we'll have a work session following, so should be interesting stuff.
So George?
Yeah.
The work session is the re-envisioning Berdstrom Park, correct? And the regular DD, the DDA is just the regular DDA?
Yeah, correct.
Thank you, George. Steve?
Yeah. Well, actually, uh I'm pretty kind of stoked cuz um I was just informed by Aaron on Monday and verified with Cindy tonight about flag football coming back to Woodland Park.
Cool.
I'm very stoked about that, and I will be part of that.
Not playing.
So I'm really stoked about that. And at the same time, I'm going to go up to the uh high school coaches and have them and speak with them about coming down and helping with this program. Because in the past, years ago, we had successful teams at the high school because we used the Park and Rec programs to develop our system at the high school. So we had a matter of consistency all the way through. And that's why we're so successful for so many years. And that has gone to the wayside now, and I wanna see that come back. So I'm gonna work pretty diligently of having that come back.
Well, I wish you best of luck. Thank you.
Well, thanks.
Um I just wanna make one correction. This list that I have on August the National Night Out on August sixth, I have received an invitation and it's up at one oh three Cedar Mountain Road in Divide at the fire station. Are there two?
There are two.
Yeah, and then there's also one in Cripple Creek.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you for that. Okay, city attorney?
Yes, thank you. So as um I told you, we're gonna speak about the residency restriction. So yeah, we've been questioned about amending section three point four of the charter, which says that um specifically to this discussion that the um no person shall be elected as mayor or council member and they must be unless they are a resident of the city of Woodland Park, not less than one year, immediately preceding such election or appointment. Um so we cannot legally increase uh the minimum residency requirement, uh we believe, beyond one year. Um the Supreme Court of Colorado held that a three-year minimum residency restrict requirement for mayoral and city council candidates pursuant to a home rule charter was unconstitutional as a violation of the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution. Uh the that's Cowan versus City of Aspen, one eighty-one, Colorado, three forty-three. That's a citation. Uh the court also addressed that when a charter amendment is struck down as invalid, for example, a three-year minimum residency requirement, the municipal candidates automatically become s- subject to the statutory durational residency requirement. And that is the Colorado Municipal Election Code, and they have a twelve-month minimum residency. In summary, this the court determined that there must be a precedent-compelling governmental interest to justify a durational residency requirement because the right to uphold public office either by appointment or election is one of the valuable and fundamental rights of citizenship. This right, and I'm quoting this case, "This right may not be infringed upon discriminatory disqualifications and any prescribed qualification to hold public office must be reasonably related to the object sought to be accomplished by imposing the qualification." The court gave examples. The following reasons were held insufficient to uphold a three-year minimum residency requirement. Assuring a mayor and council were of high quality, ensuring candidates that were well acquainted with the issues and the problems of Aspen and the mechanics to resolve those problems, the prevention of frivolous candidacy by people with little interest in the conditions and needs of the city, and longevity of residency generally leads leads to greater contact with community members, which presumably places them in a better position to serve as public officer. So none of those arguments were sufficient um to increase the one-year minimum residency requirement. The court specifically stated that it is our view that any municipality would be hard put to justify any residency requirement excess of one year. And that case, yes, it is from nineteen seventy-three, but it has been upheld many times, um not only through Colorado but throughout um the entire country. It is the ruling law of the land. And just from being very involved with um CML, all municipalities, you know, have spoken about this and continue to follow that case law. Um it's rooted in our United States Constitution. So our opinion is that it's very clear that you cannot increase um the one-year um residency requirement.
Thank you. City manager?
So was this something that you've, that former councils have talked about?
Yes, I'm reading a memo that we were asked about in November of two thousand twenty-three. But it was a.
About could it be changed? Is that what you're saying? And and?
That's our, it's pretty clear. I mean, I spoke with Jeff Wilson. He's been at Minnesota twenty-four years. It's this is, it was struck down as unconstitutional because it it also goes back not only to the Equal Protection but also Interstate Commerce Clause in the United States Constitution that you shouldn't restrict people from moving from city to city, town to town, state to state. If if you were to pass this charter amendment, it would be struck down, hands down. And you know, that would be very costly to taxpayers. But yeah, it's very clear, the ca- the case law, so.
Nina, also, it since you have the charter, I think, in front of you. Are we allowed to do charter changes during any election? Or only during general elections of the city? I I can't recall.
I know, I know generally it's it's any any election, but I have I have to look at your particular, I know Jeff would have this, but.
And I I I bring that up because I think, you know, this was a legitimate request to discover if it would be prudent to uh introduce a charter change during the November election. We have an opportunity, a very limited one, to get that on the ballot before November. Um but we we may also want to look again at the charter review process um and maybe do that in conjunction with our next general election.
Yes, and you all did that about a year ago. Jeff helped with that. So he, yeah, um city's hired uh Jeff Wilson all across the state to do that charter review type of stuff. So I would take advantage of that.
Anything else, counsel, for the attorney? I just wanna say one more thing in reference to a comment that Jeff made about code enforcement. Earlier uh before our meeting, Nina and I were visiting uh after the survey with results in our work session. She is very adept and has done quite a bit of training in many different municipalities and has lots of good recommendations and suggestions to address just that. So Nina's gonna, I believe, well, if she would, and you all agree, discuss it with Erin and see if maybe she could be of help to the staff in that way, if that's something you all would agree with.
No, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I I I will give uh credit where credit's due. I I am lived here long enough to know about the challenges we've had with code enforcement. It seems there used to be a, that uh Murphy Brown Show where the secretaries would change out every other week. But I I felt like that's what we were doing here with our enforcement, our code enforcement officers. Uh but we have a new code enforcement officer named Rick, which seems to be a requirement for code enforcement officers to be named Rick. But uh he's at least the third one that I know. Uh he he's been with the the city now since April, retired from the army in um in April, actually, and came straight to the city. Um I had a an issue, and I bring this up because others may not know about this. Uh the code, our code does cover um uh beetle kill. Uh and that is something that uh the city can enforce. If if uh live infest infestations have occurred on your property, the the city can um require you to remove those trees. And we've, they seem to go on eighteen to twenty-year cycles in their swarms, the the beetles, these pine beetles. And it's been approximately eighteen to twenty years since we had a major swarm in Woodland Park. And I noticed on an empty lot in my neighborhood that there were about a dozen trees that almost overnight turned brown, which is usually an indication of a live infestation. And I just stopped by and saw uh the code enforcement officer, and he was out there within twenty-four hours. And then he also brought the Forest Service with him. So the trees have been marked. Now it's all about uh attempting to find this out of state owner and and uh require him to remove those trees. So I I wanna give credit to Rick. Uh he's learning the neighborhoods. Um he's learning about pine kill or the uh pine beetle kill, and um I I commend him for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, it's you, Erin.
Thank you. I will say I do, Rick is fairly new in the position. I think he's getting up to speed quickly, and I think he's going to do a great job for us. We are on our fourth code enforcement officer since I've been with the city over the last three years. So it has been a challenge for us. But I do think from the community survey and from conversations we've had, it may be something we wanna talk about in the budget if we wanna add a second code enforcement officer. I think it's a great time to have the conversation. Um I I've definitely taken the feedback. I'm hearing you all loud and clear. So thank you for that. Um I did want to um add another event. On August tenth, we will be having the e-recycling event at the Public Works Facility from nine AM to to noon. Um so if you have anything out there, it it's free, but you do have to pay to to drop off. I don't, do you have the exact amount? I don't know.
Yeah, it's like forty-seven pounds or something.
Yep.
Thank you. Electronics that have liquid are not accepted.
Unless the liquid's gone, right?
Correct.
And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Well, with that, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.